This is the September 18th, 2024 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. Our first item is to call our business to order, call our meeting to order. We do have a quorum present today. Everybody's here. No, almost everybody's here, but we have a quorum. We did not have any registered public comments, but Mr. Blomley would like to make a special service announcement for us.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. This is kind of a public service announcement for all of our applicants in the audience right now. So this is the second time this has happened. There is a scam email that is going out to our applicants. Happened with our BZA agenda last month where I think there is a scammer who is taking information from our agendas and then emailing applicants, asking them for a $10,200 city compensation fee. And they're purporting to be Greg, but if you look at the email address, it's like planning.murfreesboro.tn.gov at usa.com. All of our legitimate email addresses end in murfreesboro.tn.gov. So for any of our applicants in the audience who received one of these scam emails, and I see some people nodding their heads, please do not respond to these emails. They are scams, they are phishing. And it's, our IT department does a great job of keeping us on our toes, making sure that we're always looking out for those kinds of emails. So do not respond to those emails. Do not engage with the scammer and obviously do not make that payment. Just disregard and feel free to let us know if you've gotten that. We're looking at ways that we can deter this in the future. So just wanted to make that as a public service announcement since we have all of our applicants for this month as a captive audience, so to speak, right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Matthew. That's very important for everybody to hear. Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. Again, we've had a chance to review that prior to the meeting. Did anybody have any of these items they would like removed for further discussion? If not, we'll be ready for a motion on our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second on our consent agenda. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Abelwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
All right. Next, we will have plats and plans. Our first item here today is Cherry Lane Town Homes. Site plan review for 73 single-family residential attached townhome units on 10.62 acres, zoned RSA2, located along Cherry Lane. Harney Homes LLC is the developer. Mr. Barbie, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and members of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. This next application before you today is for Cherry Lane Town Homes. This property is located on the north side of Murfreesboro across from our Murfreesboro Soccer Facility. It's surrounded on three sides by property outside the city limits of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. The proposal that you see before you today has a total of 73 single-family residential attached units on 10.62 acres. As you can see, the general layout here before you, the site is providing screening and buffering along the three adjacent property sides and is applying the same standard landscape package per Section 27 of our zoning ordinance. Architecturally, the units are, as you see here before you, they are currently in the process of making some minor revision to these to provide the base and cap on the sides and rear as you would typically see. Those should be coming through here in the very short period of time and will definitely be a part of the final approval.
Mr. Barbie, those additional PDFs that are loaded on the, are the ones that were sent by SCC this morning.
Okay. So you can see here in the image before you now where the additional base has been added. We will continue to work with them to modify the fronts to get that cap detail kind of fleshed out along those fronts. The plan is generally in good order and we would request that any approval be made subject to staff comments.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this site plan?
If there are none, I move approval subject to all staff comments. Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Abelwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have West Point lots 27 and 28. It's a master plan amendment and preliminary plat for two lots on 7.43 acres, zoned light industrial. It's located along Beezy Road. Charlie B. Mitchell is the developer. Mr. Donovan, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and members of the Planning Commission. So this is a master plan amendment and a preliminary plat for a West Point subdivision, specifically lots 27 and 28. This is located near the intersection of New Salem Highway and Warrior Drive. To give you an idea where it's at, not, most of the subdivision borders Interstate 24 as well. One item I want to note for you on the master plan, which you should be seeing on the screen for you, this adds the two additional lots in 27 and 28. The road along the back portion of the subdivision, that's the extension of Warrior Drive, has been rerouted. There's an ongoing flood study there that has some floodway that is preventing the current proposed location, so that's been rerouted a little bit. Just an item I wanted to note for you on the master plan. The preliminary plat is for the two lots, lot 27 and lot 28. The primary plat has all of our drainage easement, joint access easements and utility easements, as well as we are getting an easement to future Warrior Drive along the southern property line, so there'll be a second access off of this site eventually, as well as you can note a few areas that are noted as land bank for future parking. We'll get into that a little bit further on the site plan, but we're reserving some area there for parking expansion if it's needed, either due to demand or for a change in use in the future. Staff has reviewed the preliminary plat. It is in generally good order and recommends you approve it, subject to all staff comments.
Okay. Any questions or comments regarding the master plan amendment and preliminary plat?
If there are none, I'll make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments. Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Abelwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have West Point lots 27 and 28. The final plat for two lots on 7.43 acres, zoned light industrial and located along Beezy Road. Charlie B. Mitchell Jr. is the developer. Mr. Aguilera?
Thank you, Chair Jones. This next item is a continuation of the item that Mr. Donovan just presented. This is a final plat for West Point lots 27, 28. The purpose of this plat is to create two lots of record from a single parcel of land and decor easements as shown. The only unique element to this, again, as Mr. Donovan touched on the preliminary plat, is that parking easement to address any potential future change in use. Plans that we may seem to accommodate that, as well as the access easement Mr. Donovan touched on, south of lot 28. The staff was able to review this in conjunction with the preliminary plat and working together to make sure that there, any modifications to the preliminary plat were made on the final plat. Staff did not find any major concerns or outstanding items to be addressed, so we agree that it's generally in good order. When we ask that, should you recommend approval, that you recommend approval, subject to all staff comments.
Okay. Any questions?
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments. Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Abelwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Item D is floor and decor. It's a site plan for a 59,879 square foot retail building on six acres, zoned light industrial, located along Beezy Road. Floor and decor is the developer. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Chair Jones. So this is a site plan approval for an approximately 60,000 square foot, one-story building on Beezy Road. The proposed use here is retail. They're going to be selling floor, tile and laminate vinyl, things of that nature. So before you, you have a copy of the site plan. I'm going to walk through a few of the elements that have already been mentioned with you, as well as describe other elements of the site. So the primary entrance, at least at the initial beginning of this development, will be off of Beezy Road. There is a setup. You can see a stub on the southern property line that will connect out to Warrior Drive via that easement that was on the preliminary and final plat. We worked to get this set up here where it'll be visible from the entry to the building and kind of encourage people to go out that manner when it was out that way, when it is actually complete. The site has all of the landscaping requirements met, base of building plan-ins, perimeter plan-ins, as well as the formal open space requirements. As far as parking goes, you heard me mention that there are some land bank parking areas on this site for parking expansion. Only a portion of this building, about 38,000 square feet, is their actually retail sales floor. We have some provisions in the zoning code that allow a reduction based on storage and office use that are common elements elsewhere in the building. So what we ask them to do is calculate that parking on the whole piece, but what's required parking to be built initially is on their retail sales floor area of about 38,000. We requested a land bank, the rest of it, that way it's reserved, ready to be built, would be able to be built in areas where the parking could be used if needed by either floor and decor that's developing the site or by a future user with a change in use. So one item, a couple of items that the Planning Commission will need to weigh in on are related to the architecture, which I have some updates on the architecture that I received yesterday, so I'm pulling those up on the screen for you now. The architecture currently has a dark gray base of building, or it's bronze. It looks gray on your screen. A bronze thin brick that's on the bottom to create the base. And then above that, you have a mixture of architectural metal, which I have a sample of, if the Planning Commission would like to see it, as well as a transition to a lighter gray brick. So those will be some things the Planning Commission can discuss. We have all of the HVAC units either screened or screened through architectural or through screening mechanisms. The one thing that Plan Commission will also need to have a discussion on is our design guidelines, let me get back to the site plan, require that the primary facade or enassing of the building face the public thoroughfare. In this case, the thoroughfare here, there would be, need to be, the face, the front face of the building would need to be presented to would be Beezy Road. And the front entry is about midways of this side of the building. This face is what's actually towards Beezy Road. What they have done, and the facade that's in front of you shows where they have provided some spandrel glass, a canopy, to create kind of the false front facade, which is what's allowed as an alternative in the design guidelines if the Planning Commission chooses to approve it. And here is the central facade, central part of the facade where the actual entrance is towards the bulk of their parking on the southern side of the building. So staff has reviewed the site plan and believes it's in general good order. There are a few items related to the building's architecture as far as its orientation that the Planning Commission does need to discuss. And one item that also fell to mention that is in your staff report, the dumpster enclosure initially had some CMU on it. That's not on the architecture. They've updated those. So we now have a dumpster enclosure that matches the existing materials on the building. And I'm happy to answer any questions and the development team is here as well.
Mr. Donovan, can I just ask for you to explain? This is my first experience with land bank parking spaces. Can you tell me, so that just like reserves, they have to put those in later if, once they complete the retail space or expand into additional retail space or?
So that would be the trigger. If they do an expansion that required more parking, if for some reason their parking demand increased, they needed more parking, those areas are set aside for that. Or say, floor and decor is no longer operating in the building, another use goes in, they're out of 60,000 square foot, or you know, 55,000 square foot floor area, they would need additional parking. So those are set aside, can be used for another purpose. We have it noted as such on the plat where those are available to be, you know, fairly readily graded out, have asphalt put down and expand the parking area.
Okay. So the parking area is not actually there to begin with. It is just still green space?
That is correct.
And then, but they know that if it was ever expanded, that is the area that they have to use for that parking?
Yes, ma'am.
And there's enough space to get the required number of parking spaces that would be needed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So I know you said it's based off the retail square footage. Are we allowing any parking spots for the office and warehousing and everything else? Is there allotted parking for those areas of the building?
So there's not a separate calculation that we're running for those. You know, it's based strictly off the retail, kind of in conjunction with the discussion that myself have with floor and decor and our planning director. They also provided a parking study that, for their use, that shows that they typically demand much less than what we would need. I think we're comfortable with the amount that they're providing, we'll be, we'll work for their use. And if not, we have a way to get them to add additional parking.
Are these like the traffic studies for apartments that always say the traffic goes down when apartments are built? Had?
I never heard of it. So is it just the, what triggers it is the fact that it's retail space versus if somebody used this big box space for something else other than retail floor and decor? Does any other use that comes in there trigger the parking?
Any use that would acquire additional parking would have the spaces available to add to, and we would require it through a change of use.
So there's no trigger for us if we go out there and it's parked to the brim every single time somebody goes out there? There's nothing for us to trigger and say, hey, you need more parking. It's just when floor and decor decides we want to expand, there's an expansion pad. But if it's not adequately parked, we're just approving a plan that's not adequately parked.
I think that our mechanism to determine if something is adequately parked are the parking requirements in our zoning ordinance. And I think that we are, I think that's what our staff has used to determine what the minimum number of parking spaces should be. And what Mr. Donovan is saying, that if there is a, if they ever increase the amount of retail space, which would be something that would likely require a building permit, which we review those building permits when they come in, that would trigger us to be able to say, hey, we need to submit a site plan and add the parking that you said that you were going to add. Or if a new use comes in and converts some of the space in that building to additional retail space, that would be a trigger also. So I think we have mechanisms in place to, as safeguards for that. I think we have been using our adopted standards as the guide for what parking we would require for this site.
So can I just understand, is, are they building this 58,000, 59,879? Or are they only building 38,000?
So they're building the entire floor plan, footprint, excuse me, footprint that's shown. I think I included the, I did not. So they actually provided us a breakdown. There's a portion of the building that, and it's shown here, this dotted line generally, there's a portion of the building that they have that they do some bulk storage of their, for their retail sales floor. That's more of a warehouse and not necessarily a traffic generator on the property.
And that's what's left out?
Yes, ma'am.
So they are using the full 59,879 square feet. They're just not, they don't have that much retail floor space is what?
Yes.
And so parking is calculated just on retail floor space?
Floor space, yes.
Learn something new every day.
I'm only one of seven, but I'd rather adequately park it up front.
Well, how do we do, like when you have a strip mall that's put in and they have bays and maybe only one of them is there to start with, but because they haven't leased the rest of them out yet?
We park it.
And in that one bay, even though it might be 1,200 square feet, they use 1,000 for retail space and 200 in the back for their office and storage. So when we calculate parking for that would be just based on the 1,000 square feet. And if there's six bays in that strip shopping center, there'd be, you'd be parking it for 6,000 square feet because you just?
So that is what we typically do, is we park it for the entire building and including the backs in those commercial centers.
You do include the back in the commercial centers?
We do. There are provisions that would allow them to exclude portions of that. It's for storage, office, I can't remember. Mr. Blomley would have to help me out and look up the exact exclusions. But typically, we prefer them to park it for the entire building, yes.
And it's based on, so when we park something by square footage, it's based on the definition of floor area in our zoning ordinance. And floor area allows for certain elements of the building to be excluded from the floor area calculations that are, elements of the building that are not seen as heavy parking generators. And so what we require when someone is wanting to deduct those areas is a breakdown of that square footage, typically accompanied by a floor plan. And what Mr. Donovan was alluding to earlier, here's what can be excluded from the definition of floor area for the purposes of parking calculations. Open exterior balconies or other covered, uncovered open spaces, uncovered terraces, patios, porches, atria or steps, garages, carports and other enclosed or unenclosed areas used for the parking or circulation of motor vehicles, major mechanical equipment areas which serve the building as a whole or a major portion thereof. Finally, areas of common special purpose used by a substantial portion of the occupants of the premises, including laundries, recreation areas, sitting areas, libraries, storage areas, common halls, lobbies, stairways, elevator shafts, attics and areas devoted exclusively to management and/or maintenance of the premises.
Well, you didn't mention office space in that.
I did.
Office, offices have to be parked, do they not?
Didn't you mention office in there?
Offices are not in there. I think, I don't know if they include, I would assume the office component of a big store like this is a relatively small amount of square footage, and I don't know if they included that within the?
That's why, that's why I asked the question. He said no.
Yeah, it was, it was in the area that was excluded.
Yeah, so we didn't park the offices at all?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Everyone here knows how I feel about parking.
I was just waiting for you to chime in. I'm all alone, Jamie.
After four years, he goes without saying how I feel about the parking. Now granted, this is not a residential community. It is commercial and maybe not as stringent on my parking, but I did have an issue with the shared parking agreement of the TDK Development on Medical Center, and this seems as scary to think about. You guys are doing a great job complaining about the parking. I'll let you keep going.
Just trying to understand.
Can I ask a question? Are you guys going ahead and mass grading for the parking stalls? Is that what I heard correctly? They're going ahead and getting graded out on the front end, right?
The future spaces will be mass graded.
So they're going to get graded out and just stabilize for now?
Correct, yes.
Until, until the expansion happens?
Correct, yeah. So if I may, Connor Hornin, I'm the civil engineer on this project. What we have is allocated is 119 spaces currently. With that parking study, floor and decor typically generate on the highest end 100 spaces at the maximum volume. Floor and decor doesn't want to have insufficient parking for their spaces, right? Because then they're losing sales. The idea is if that, this site, if this storefront in the future has amassed what's expected for sales, then floor and decor is doing great. We have plenty of money to go in and add those extra spaces, which would be advantageous for them as well.
So how big of a deal would it be to add them on the front end if you're going ahead and grading for them now?
It's really cost savings is the driving factor there. They've been essentially fully designed to this point. If you can see, they're kind of grade out. They're in the full civil set of plans. So as Richard pointed out, they are dedicated. There's easements there. Nothing else can go in those spaces, short of, you know, landscaping and lighting, which would be in your parking anyway. So like I said, it's really just a kind of cost-saving measure because it's far excess from, you know, anything that a floor and decor really puts out as far as parking.
That's a great question. I mean, I'm conflicted because I am a stickler for putting in the required parking that we have set, but I also am trying to respect the fact that the parking is there, it's just not usable. So I guess it's kind of like someone building a parking lot and then just closing up half of it because they want their customers to park on one side of the building. And I go to floor and decor all the time, so I know that you don't have thousands of people in the store. I mean, I'm usually, there's like five people in the store at one time. Like it's not a heavily traffic area, so I acknowledge that. But I mean, we do have an ordinance and it requires parking, and we make everyone else stick to the parking even when it costs them a lot of money. Sometimes developers have to take out units and remove public space and remove pavilions, and that's unfortunately, that's just part of it. So I mean, I'm excited about floor and decor investing in Murfreesboro, but I think if the only reason we're not building out those parking stalls is because of cost, I'm not sure that is a reason that resonates with me. I won't speak for the rest of Planning Commission, but.
Sure. Well, I would say it's not just for cost. I mean, it's also, it's kind of for need as well, right? I mean, it's kind of excess, and then right now, that's open space essentially. So if anything, you know, I think a lot of people consider parking an eyesore, whereas now this will be landscaped area in the meantime. So I mean, I guess that's, you know, sort of an added benefit as well.
Well, I think.
Are you going to temporary landscape, the future parking areas?
So, I'm sorry, it will be sod, the areas that will be landscaped will be the landscape islands.
That's behind the future parking, right?
Yeah, as well as behind, but the areas that are going to be landscape islands will have landscape to put in currently as well.
But you're not going to do like temporary landscape where the future parking's shown right now?
Correct. I believe it's just sod.
Yeah.
Well, I want you to let us worry about what's an eyesore for Murfreesboro, and we'll let you worry about whether or not you want to come to Murfreesboro, but I'm requiring the parking spots to be built out. So, anyone else?
I already made my point clear.
Great.
I mean, the only other thing I would say to it, like you've got one ingress and egress out of the site. So if you come and want to add these parking stalls at a later date, and assuming, I mean, you're keeping the store functional, so you've got. you're, you're keeping the store functional, so you've got trucks, dump trucks coming in and out while you're maintaining the store, operating, like, I just, to me, it almost makes sense from a logistics standpoint to go ahead and do it, bite the bullet down, and be done with it. You know, if, if you don't use them, you don't use them, but like, wouldn't you want to just go ahead and do it now instead of doing it later, like, two years from now? And the store's fully operational and you get a, let's say it is, you know, overparked or whatever, now you've got to deal with construction going on, expanding onto these parking stalls, and it's like, you don't have to deal with that if you go ahead and do it now.
Sure, yeah, I see your point. I think, I think...
That's only, that, because, I mean, you don't have another, it, that's, there's one way in, one way out of the, of the site, you know? So, I mean, that's gonna, it's gonna be shared access for construction and, and, um, you know, consumers, so... I mean, I see both sides, but I kind of lean to, if you're going ahead and mass grading it for it, like, it just kind of makes more sense to me to just go ahead and do it now, to be honest.
And can I just ask about the, for example, all the parking on the north side, the, the strip along the full length of the north side of the property? So if, the people that are going to park in those spaces as, uh, where, where, where will they come in and out of the, of the store? Are there doors on all sides? So I, I would guess maybe employees might park over there?
Sure, yeah.
And they would have some access in and out, but would, would consumers also be using those parking spaces?
Um, most likely not. I mean, you know, we, we anticipate the consumers to use mostly the southern and eastern portion. If those spaces were to be constructed, then yes, most likely it would be employee parking, which would have entrances in the rear.
Well, you bring up a good point, too, because right now in the rear, what we're calling the rear, which is the planned north side, there's no sidewalk at all shown on that side. So if you got entryway coming into the building, there's no sidewalk, so I feel like you would almost want to bring that sidewalk to on the east side of the building, like planned east, and take it, bring it around that corner that's an island right there now and tie it in on the west side. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think you're talking right here. Is that...
Yeah, correct. Yeah, take that sidewalk, bring it up, run down the length of the building and tie it in on the other side, on the northwest side.
It looks like it might be, does it?
No, I think that's just common area. I think it's just grass.
Yeah, it's, it is currently common area with, um...
So if you do have doors, it needs to have sidewalk on that side, too, for access, I would think.
No, it's fraud.
It's like that time we wanted to build a park in the middle of a visiting...
In the middle of the avenue, yeah.
Right, so I'm just going to make a mo... I make a motion to approve with the addition of the other parking lot.
What are you saying about the sidewalk?
And the sidewalk.
Second.
And all other staff comments?
And all, and all other staff comments.
Second.
And just for clarification, you said the other parking lot. You're talking about all three of the areas that are, that are grayed out on there?
Yes, full build out.
I, I will say there are four, but...
Four, okay.
Just...
Yeah, full build out.
Make your full motion.
Make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments, including the full build out of all available parking, no banked parking, and include the sidewalk to the backside.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Abel Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate it very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we are going to make one small change on the agenda, just because this item is going to affect other things that we do along the way. We would like to ask for a motion to move item seven B up to this point on our agenda, which would become now item five E.
Oh, seven B?
Seven B is the, our amendment for our Planning Commission, uh...
Okay, gotcha.
Change to our date for our meeting, so we kind of need to know what the date for our meeting's going to be before we start trying to schedule all these public hearings.
I thought it was because Ben wanted to go home early.
So if we could have a motion to move seven B to item five E.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob? Ms. Abel Water?
Aye.
Mr. Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Salas?
Mr. Salas votes yes.
Full list.
Old information.
It's like Shane McFar...
Mr. Prince, I got you. Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Did we get Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Thank you, Tristan.
Aye.
So I think we all agree that our next item is the amendment to the 2024 Plan Review Calendar and 2024 Planning Commission Meeting Calendar. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Chair Jones. You know, it is kind of funny because Mr. Salas actually emailed me a week ago and said he was still getting paid by the city, and so, so he's apparently voting by proxy right now as well.
Needs to get flipped over to me.
Yes.
Wait, you get paid for this?
You don't.
So I appreciate everybody's responses. As you know, um, November sixth is our regularly scheduled November night meeting, and the TAPA, Tennessee Chapter of the American Planning Association's Annual Conference in Kingsport is going to be the sixth through the eighth, and a number of our staff members are going to be there. And so y'all graciously agreed to, or, or let me know your availability to move that, that meeting date. What we would like to recommend is to amend the calendar. Only two motions, one to amend the Planning Commission Meeting Calendar and one to amend the Planning Commission Plans Review Calendar, to reschedule that meeting to October the thirtieth, which is the Wednesday before, and we have an extra Wednesday in October, so I think it'll work out perfectly. Everybody will be here except Ms. Jones, who had prior obligation for either of the two dates that, that I, that I suggested. So if it pleases the Planning Commission, we would recommend, or we would request motions to, um, to amend those two calendars for, to move that November sixth Planning Commission Meeting Date to October the thirtieth at six P.M.
I will make a motion to move the Planning Commission Meeting from November sixth to October thirtieth, which will be a public hearing.
Second, ma'am, evening meeting with public hearings.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob? Let me get to a fresh page.
If you call for Eddie, some other men to vote.
Ms. Abel Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I like Eddie, but just...
And then we need another motion to amend the Plans Review Cal, Calendar.
I will make a motion to amend the Plans Review Calendar to whatever Mr. Blomley says.
Second.
Does that work for you?
That works perfectly.
Oh, yeah, you like that.
I love those kinds of motions.
Ms. Jacob? Ms. Abel Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. So, as we schedule these public hearings, we'll be looking at a date of October thirtieth. So now, moving on to our new business, our first item is a zoning application to amend the PUD zoning, the Clary Park PUD, on approximately eight acres located along Robert Rose Drive and Robby Corlou Lane. Hans Clary Park Land Holdings LLC is the applicant. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon again. This application before you today is a request to amend the existing PUD zoning for Clary Park. This particular parcel of Clary Park is approximately eight acres and is located along both Robert Rose Drive and Robby Corlou Lane. The request before you today is to make a minor site change. They're going to be eliminating one of the two existing proposed access points along Robert Rose Drive, eliminating that, adding additional green space and amenity area. The bigger request today before you is an architectural change. In the original plan book, the architectural style and elevations that you see before you are what was approved, they are requesting today to change the architecture to the images that you see here. This originally came to us as a minor deviation request. Staff reviewed the request and was unable to, to make a approval of that request based on the level of change, therefore it is before you today. I'm available if you have questions, and I believe that Mr. Matt Taylor is also with us, and I believe he has a presentation as well.
Okay, hello, Mr. Taylor?
Good evening, or good afternoon. Chair Jones, member of the Planning Commission, and Matt Taylor. I don't have a real formal presentation. I did want to go through why we felt like this was appropriate, why we paid this request. I don't know if there's a...
The, the pattern book follows the, the staff comments.
Okay. I may just use this. And so our site is here in the blue directly here, basically, that is where the apartments are currently under construction, and on the other side, you've got some commercial retail, and you've got Redstone down here. And so this site being kind of between a, a more modern-looking apartments with flat roofs and all your commercial having the flat roofs directly in front, we felt like that this architecture was a better use. It fit in this particular part of the community better, and, you know, it really was not available whenever, did not envision it whenever we did the original PUD. I would say that these elevations, this three and four-story, it's probably a little more akin to what we were doing at Meadowlark, the Toll Brothers piece on the other side of Willow Oak, between Willow Oak and Wilkinson. There, they used all slope roof. I feel like that was probably more appropriate because we were closer to the existing residential on the northern side of Wilkinson, but here we're much more internal to our own project. What these don't show or the other options, let me go all the way to the pattern book. And so, there we go. So we do have a optional fourth floor, which would be some rooftop type area that'd be open to the individual buyers as they come. So really, I, I think we're keeping rear low garages, we're keeping the plazas in front of the units, we're keeping a good mix of cement board and brick, a lot of variation in those front elevations. And so I think we're still producing a good quality product, it's just different, and that's why it's before you. It is, it is very different than what is proposed at the back, but we think this is a more appropriate style of architecture in this particular location on the project.
So, Mr. Taylor, we're, we're looking at right there, and then when you scroll back to the, what we were looking at, that?
Yes, ma'am.
So top left is very different even than what we're looking at on the next screen.
I think that's fair. I think the top left, we have been working with staff, what is not reflected inside the PUD book, is we've been looking, working with staff to make some projections up to not have a flat roof line right there. And so we have been working with staff, and we'll continue working with staff, to make that a little more compatible. Staff expressed some concern with that roof line with us last week, and some applicant has already made some changes to that and proposed that back to staff, it's just not into the pattern book yet. They've also asked us to make a couple revisions on the side elevations, which I think we got a general agreement on description, we just got to get the drawings updated for that.
Because I do just have to say, I, I really don't like what we were seeing originally. The top left and then the side elevations, whether they were the side or the back, I'm not sure, those.
Those.
I, I just think that's, I just think they have a lot of room for improvement to, you know, just to make the area look better. I mean, everything about what we've done out on Medical Center Parkway and our whole gateway area, I think, has been something, you know, I don't know, ninety percent of the people in Rutherford County probably are very proud of.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't want to take a chance on doing something that has any chance to start giving that a different level of quality that we're allowing in that area. And I, I, to me, that brings it down a notch. I just don't want to see that.
Yes, ma'am. So what we have talked with the staff about is introducing a second material and second color on these side elevations to help break that up. And so we're working through that right now with staff, and we'll have those prior to any public hearings that we would have, and so...
Ms. Jones, you know, I think these are some of the same concerns that, that Mr. Barbie has expressed to the applicant, and he's currently working, working with Mr. Taylor and the design team on that, and I think we would, we concur with Mr. Taylor that we would, we would anticipate having updated elevations prior to the public hearing.
And I wish I could say I would be here to see that on October thirtieth, but I won't.
Well, this one, so, so there are only two that we're recommending at this time for October thirtieth.
Oh.
The rest of them would be, including this one, we are recommending for a public hearing on October the second, so at our, at our, at our next night meeting. So the, the October thirtieth...
Wait a minute, you blocked.
So, so we, the, the meeting that we changed was the November sixth meeting date.
Oh, I see. So this is going to, you're wanting this for October?
We'll have our regular October second meeting date, and the reason that we had to change the November sixth one was because we have a couple items on here that, that include an annexation, and because of the new state law, the annexations have to be pushed out farther, and so we had to have our, our next, our next night meeting date nailed down.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Taylor, I'll be here.
I look forward to seeing you.
Yeah.
But we're, we feel confident we can work with staff over the next couple of weeks and, and make those revisions.
Appreciate it. Any other comments?
I, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, I just agree with Kathy. Let me just say it that way.
Move to schedule the public hearing for October the second. Second.
October second? Was that, oh, yeah. That was a second.
A second for the second.
Ms. Jacob? Ms. Abel Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay, so then we have a zoning application for approximately ninety-two point five-four acres located along New Salem Highway and Barfield Road to be rezoned from RS fifteen to CH. Matt Taylor of SEC Inc. on behalf of World Outreach Church is the applicant. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Chair Jones. This application is to rezone an approximately ninety-two and a half acre site from RS fifteen to CH Commercial Highway. The properties located at nineteen twenty-one New Salem Highway are the southwest intersection of New Salem Highway and Barfield Road. The site is currently home to the World Outreach Church campus, which is allowed in the RS fifteen district under a special use permit. World Outreach has obtained three special use permits on three different occasions in two thousand and three, two thousand and seven, and two thousand and twelve. Those for, were for additional parking, a building and parking expansion, and outdoor speakers respectively. So the, the CA, this is a request to bulk CH zoning, which the CH zoning district permits a wide variety of, of retail, office, medical, and institutional uses, and some housing types. This also, you know, includes allowing churches, which is what, what's already currently on the proposed site. Your, your packet had a, had the use chart that it contained all of the, the allowed uses in CH. So as far as adjacent lands to, to this property, what they're zoned, north of this is the River Rock Baptist Church, which is zoned RS fifteen. There's a single-family structure, it's on CF also to the north, along with Shalom Farms Apartment, which is zoned RM sixteen, and a piece of vacant land that is zoned CH. To the east of this property is Thornton's, a pump station and a cell tower, as well as a recently approved Salem Square Site Plan, and the future placement of an MTE substation. All of those properties are zoned CH. And then to the south and the remainder of the, the east side of this property is within the unincorporated county. It's zoned RM, which is medium-density residential in the county. So the, the future land use... So, the, the future land use plan for this location identifies it as public and institutional uses, which the PI designation is intended for governmental buildings, hospitals, and institutional uses that are both public and private, of a church which is one of those institutional uses. The Commercial Highway Zone District allows a wide variety, that I've already mentioned, retail, office, medical, and commercial uses. It also allows by right the church use. However, it was not envisioned for this site to be CH. So, that'll be something that the planning commission needs to have a little further discussion on, whether, if this is an appropriate deviation for the, the future land use plan. So, planning commission will need to discuss this rezoning and that deviation from the land use plan, and set a public hearing date. Staff has recommended an October 2nd for that public hearing.
Okay, any questions regarding this request?
Right, I mean, I'm just curious, and I don't know if this is a fair question or not, but what's the, what's the motive behind it, the rezoning? Is that a fair question?
I will actually let Mr. Taylor handle that one.
Thank you. Matt Taylor from SEC. The church is proposing a new project over on the western side of their campus, and so, as we started discussing architecture and some of the uses in that building, needed a, you know, they were butting up against, I think, 65 to 70 feet tall with the building itself, and not just the ornamental towers. And so, and then some of the uses, the pastor there puts on quite a few, I think he flies to Texas every week, or every other week, to do some recordings, and so, they're trying to bring some of that stuff in-house, and so, that's the request, and it just allows us to have some consistency across the campus at that point. But it really started with the height of the building.
Okay. Mr. Halliburton, this was a similar situation to what happened with New Vision Baptist Church on Thompson Lane. They wanted to, the, the building they're currently building was going to exceed the maximum building height in the, in the RS-15 zone, which is 35 feet. Our zoning ordinance allows for ornamental towers up to 70 feet, steeples and other types of ornamental towers, but New Vision wanted to build a building that had functional space, not just an ornamental tower. Same thing with World Outreach Church. With New Vision Baptist Church, that property was rezoned to CM, which is medical office zoning, because it allowed up to 60-foot maximum building height, and that served the needs of New Vision Baptist Church just fine. But for World Outreach, they want to exceed that 60-foot maximum building height requirement, and so, they've requested CH zoning, which has a maximum building height of 75 feet. Another thing that, that rezoning it away from the RS-15 zone will do for, for a very big institutional campus like this, that is expected to continue growing, in the RS-15 zone, that requires a special use permit for every addition or expansion, the Commercial Highway Zone will allow those additions and expansions by right, negating the need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, I think those are probably the two big reasons why, is the, is the maximum building height, and then avoiding repetitive reaplication to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
My only other comment would be then, I think we just need to be careful when this comes as a site plan, that if you're going to have a building that tall, how it, you know, how far it is from what's, what's left of the residential that's next to them, so... Yes, sir. The, of course, directly to the west is the pastor's house, and then, there's still quite a bit of church property to the south of what we're rezoning, that's in, that's still in the county, and so, all of that would still continue, continue to be zoned residential inside the county. And so, we're, any project is going to be well outside, or well away from residential, so we agree with that. Thanks, Matt.
Okay, so, we're looking for a public hearing on October 2nd.
So moved.
2nd.
Motion, 2nd. Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Abel Water? Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Our next item is a mandatory referral for the abandonment of a portion of Rucker Lane right-of-way, located at the intersection of Rucker Lane and Smith Jarrett Road. SEC, Inc., on behalf of Kevin Waldron, is the applicant. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Chair Jones. So, the mandatory referral application before you is to abandon a section of Old Rucker Lane's right-of-way. This is a piece that no longer has a roadway within its boundaries, it's, actually has grass in it. So, the, the piece of right-of-way being requested for annexation, then ten, or annexation, excuse me, for abandonment, is, tended to be divided and added to the adjacent parcels to the east. You can see there are three parcels, tract 1, 2, and 3, and then there's also a little triangle remnant to the west, which is under Mr. Waldron's control, and then intent would be to add the abandoned right-of-way to those properties. Staff has sent this out for comment from city staff and utilities. We're receiving those back to, we're asking for comment on the impact of the abandonment. We'll have a summary for you at the public hearing, what we receive back. Planning Commission will need to discuss the right-of-way abandonment and schedule it for a public hearing. Staff has recommended an October 2nd for that public hearing.
Any questions?
Motion to put this on the public hearing.
2nd.
Which one, October 2nd?
Yeah, 2nd for 2nd.
All right. Ms. Jacob. Ms. Abel Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay, next we have a zoning application for approximately 5.1 acres, located along Greenland Drive, to be rezoned from RM16 to PRD, to crossings at Greenland, PRD. SW Capital Group is the applicant. Ms. Smith, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and Commission. As you can see on the screen, the location of this project site is south of Greenland Drive, and to the west of Fairview Avenue, it's an existing apartment complex. Some of you may have heard of bifurcation projects in the past. City has now approved five of them, three of them have been complete, and today we have two more to consider that we would like to put on your public hearing for 10-2. The project site is basically looking at a PRD for both of the properties. As you can see here, our land use map shows it designated for multifamily residential type uses for the property in question, and then the project itself is looking at modifying three of the buildings to take off the four-bedroom, four-bath units, and instead put in two-bedroom and one-bedroom units. So, if you look in your program book, page 13 is a great summary of all the information. Staff always makes sure to look at the parking information. We confirmed with the applicant today that these spaces that are provided does not include the handicaps, so there is some additional parking onsite for handicap uses. This first one actually has a net change of 42 additional, what we call, units, but they're actually reducing their bedroom count by about 24%. So, our water and sewer department took a look at the information, analyzed it, and determined that they believe that the project will have a reduction in sewer, and under a new ordinance that the council passed, I think it was a year, year and a half ago, they don't need a sewer allocation variance because they're actually going to reduce it, and part of council's approval of the PRD will look at making sure that our land use components and public health, safety, welfare items are addressed. And so, they do request, though, that all of the fixtures throughout the property, not just the ones that they're changing out from the four-bedroom, four-bath to traditional units, but all of them on the entire property go to the low-flow devices, so we get further sewer reductions. In this particular project, as well as the other one, you'll see several phases for improvements to the site that they've labeled out and shaded out, as well as improvements to landscaping. And the one area in which staff is still trying to work through is the upgrades to the existing trash enclosures that are basically wood structures that we believe should be to our city standards, which are masonry, which serves really two purposes, one for any potential fires. Looks like one of the sites has had one in the past that melted some of the globes on the site, so that's one of the main reasons for it. But you can see we're looking at upgrades that are some deferred maintenance. I believe the applicant who's here today is Troy and Jake from SW Capital. They're part of the partner team that I think about two years ago purchased the property, and they've actually been doing upgrades in Phase 1 that you saw in the booklet, and so, here we show Phases 2 and 3 for further upgrades to the site. Staff is working on modifying and fine-tuning those particular applications, and we, the applicant is here, should you have any questions further on it, but we're asking that you set the public hearing for 10-2, for consideration for a PRD recommendation to council.
Okay, any questions regarding this application?
Moved to set the public hearing for October 2nd.
2nd.
Motion, 2nd. Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Abel Water? Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. And then we have a zoning application for approximately 6.15 acres, located along Hazelwood Street, to be rezoned from RM16 to PRD. This is the crossings at Hazelwood, PRD. And again, we have SW Capital Group as the applicant. Ms. Smith?
So, again, the same investment company has purchased the property and has been diligently working on the site for a couple of years, and now they're getting to the point for the bifurcation project. So, as you can see on the screen above you, this is actually south of Hazelwood, and it's to the west of Old Luskassus Road. Sometime over the last 20 years, bollards were basically installed along this section of the property that blocked access out back to Old Luskassus, so we're wanting to make sure that that is reopened and appropriately handled, because it does go through another property where there is a blanket cross-access easement for that section. This particular project is looking at, in summary, taking 24 four-bedroom units offline and adding 36 one-bedrooms and 12 two-bedrooms for a 24, what we call, net new units, but the actual reduction in the amount of bedroom count on this one is 15%, so not as good as the prior project, but still, to where sewer department has analyzed it and has determined that it will have less sewer, and therefore won't need a special separate sewer allocation for the project site. The land use for the property is multifamily. Again, it was created almost 22 or so years ago, and surrounding the site, there's RM16 condos that were recently built due north of the project site, highway commercial to their westerly boundary, and RM12 duplexes to the south of the property. The types of improvements, again, that they're looking at here are phased, so the first phase is, actually spells out the improvements that they have made to the site, and then Phases 2 and 3 have outlined, so as an example, they've already put in a new pickleball court, updated pool area, added a dog park, so they've done a lot of upgrades that we usually won't see until the bifurcation project, but in order to start to get these projects in good order, they went ahead and started those after they purchased the property. In this particular case, parking spaces are exactly spot-on with what's provided onsite and what's required by our current standards. Some of these older projects actually, if you look at the top, had different standards. It was only one parking space for a one-bedroom, two parking spaces for two, and so forth, whereas nowadays, we require 1.5 for a one-bedroom, 2.2, 3.3, 4.4. So, the standards have increased over time, but even with the bifurcation and increasing those units, their parking actually meets the standard, and this, again, does not include handicap spaces, so there are additional spaces to meet ADA handicap standards. In this particular property area, we are, this is a fully fenced facility, the applicant has, excuse me, this is not a fully fenced facility, but there are some ADA lack of connection points, again, here on Hazelwood, as well as back towards Old Luskassus, that we would want to get taken care of as part of the project. They will be updating their landscaping with their new HVAC enclosures, and then they're proposing various upgrades throughout the site for landscaping that has been missing over time, some broken-down areas in front of trash dumpster enclosures, and again, this is one that staff is trying to work with the applicant to have our regular city standard trash enclosures, which, again, would be non-combustible material, as well as speak to the architecture of the site. This particular project, PRD, is basically a change to the density, and we're requesting that a planning commission public hearing be set for 10-2, and again, the applicant and the developer team that's there in the back row, same developer as the prior item.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to take on duplexes along that street, would you? Just kidding.
All right. Any other questions or comments regarding this application?
Moved to set the public hearing for 10-2.
2nd.
Motion, 2nd. Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Abel Water? Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank you, Commission. Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have a zoning ordinance amendment regarding retail and distribution uses and pertaining to the following sections. Section 2, definitions; Section 9, standards for special permit uses; and Chart 1, uses permitted, including its inbuilt. The City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Mr. Taylor?
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and Commissioners. Yes, this is an application for an amendment to the zoning ordinance. The purpose here is to respond to some changes in the retail industry. Specifically, the city staff have received multiple inquiries and applications over the last few months from different retail operations that are proposing essentially hybrid retail and distribution uses. They're sometimes pitched as something like a superstore, think of like a Super Target. The difference here, though, is rather than having more products onsite for customers to purchase, they also have a distribution component where they are restocking the shelves of stores that are surrounding them, or fulfilling customer orders from those surrounding stores. So, under the current zoning ordinance, these uses, this staff has determined would have to be denied as being primarily redistribution or warehousing. However, staff does recognize the value of these types of uses, particularly because a lot of them are targeted towards troubled shopping centers, and these types of uses could be positives for the city. However, the zoning ordinance, as it's currently drafted, would not permit them to be, to go into those areas, and certainly would not permit them to be, to go in with a special use permit process. That's what staff here is proposing, is to allow these uses, but to allow them in limited areas. After multiple discussions with various levels of city government and city staff, it was determined that the best placement for these would be within the Qualified Opportunity Zone, which is a zone that was designated by the federal government for investment in low-income areas. So, the, the goal there is to, rather than having these many distribution centers all over the city, we would have them in this one limited area that is ripe for increased investment, and to do so with a special use permit process, to be able to limit the impacts on the surrounding streets and properties. So, this particular amendment here has some changes to the definitions to respond to these new uses, as well as setting up this special use permit process for these uses. So, with that, I'm certainly available for any questions.
All right, one question.
Yes, sir.
The Opportunity Zones expire at the end of this year. If they're not renewed, how are we going to address that?
That's true. I believe, well, certainly we could create a new overlay, or we could just keep overlay as it currently exists in that particular area, have these uses go there.
What happens if the, I mean, the true definition of the Opportunity Zones for the tax code were to go into areas that were depressed or harder to get tenants?
Mm-hmm.
What happens if that area of town changes? What happens if that area of town changes? Because, I mean, I like the idea of basing it off of the opportunity zones, but if the opportunity zones go away, we can't just make an overlay to account for an opportunity zone that's there in 2024.
Right.
But by 2028, the opportunity zone may be on the opposite side of town.
That's true. And one other, one other downside of using the opportunity zone is that it's not something set by the city, it's set by the federal government.
Right.
So we don't have control over it. But like I said, this was the result of multiple discussions with the city leadership. And that was suggested, however, we certainly could change that to a different area. It doesn't necessarily have to be limited to the opportunity zone, it could do something else.
But the way it's worded now would be via opportunity zone, right?
Correct. That was the direction we received, but we can certainly change that to have it be in a different area.
I think we need to have that verbiage changed before the public hearing, because we only have three months left of the opportunity zone, because it does not look like the federal government is going to renew that.
Mm-hmm.
So by the time we got this passed on October 2nd, then go to council, this isn't even going to be passed or barely passed by the time the opportunity zones don't exist.
Because we need two readings at council, right?
Yeah, we need two readings at council.
Right.
So I would say it needs the opportunity zone stuff reworded, because by the time we got it passed, the opportunity zones aren't going to exist.
I'd just like to make a comment here. I really appreciate staff working through this, because this came before the BZA, and it was a tough application. Not sure the planning department had all the right facts in the very beginning of this. But the fact that we're trying to make this work, I think it's going to be a positive. And actually, it sounds like maybe two different places when this is all said and done. So I just, kudos to the staff and legal department to try to make this work.
And I'll make a comment on that, too. I mean, one of these situations, I'm 43 years old and have lived in the city my entire life, and one of those complexes has never been full of tenants.
Yeah.
And for us to be able, for us to even think about turning a good organization down from being in that complex was asinine to begin with. So I appreciate the work on it, too.
Yep.
So do you think we set a public hearing or push it out, or what would you all like to do?
Do we need to reschedule the public hearing, knowing that the language is going to change, or do we need to defer this?
Since it's a zoning application brought by the city, I mean, there's no shot clock or particular timeline, we would like to move as expeditiously as possible due to the pending matter before the BZA and to try to set some sort of certainty for that process. So with that in mind, staff would prefer, if we set it, and then we can work with staff, we can work with leadership. If anyone from the planning commission wants to reach out to the legal department or the planning department individually to discuss other areas that we might set as the benchmark area for this, other than the opportunity zone, we'll be glad to work through that.
All right. I move to schedule for October 2nd, and then if we need to move, we can move it.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jekka.
Ms. Abelwater? Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 15.9 acres located along Joby Jackson Parkway and Butler Drive. The City of Murfreesboro McDonald Associates and Quick Trip Corporation are the applicants. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Chair Jones. So the City of Murfreesboro has submitted this annexation petition request, and we expect to receive concurrence from and sign petitions from the other two parties, McDonald and Associates and Quick Trip Corporation, for annexation of their properties into the city. This annexation includes three properties on the north side of Joby Jackson Parkway, all of which three of those parcels are currently vacant today. As Chair Jones stated, the total annexation study area includes 15.9 acres. The city has also submitted a companion rezoning application with these, which I've exhibited up in front of you, that shows the companion zoning that was submitted along with the annexation. So the intent here is the HI properties that you see there are going to be part of the city's transfer station. The CH portion at the corner of where Butler Drive is being realigned and Joby Jackson will be a proposed gas station with a fuel canopy, and the GI property doesn't have a proposed use at this time. This annexation is within the city's urban growth boundary, is also contiguous to the existing city limits, has properties on all through the north, the west, and the south are within the city, as well as the portion of rerouted Butler Drive has been annexed into the city a few months ago. This area is also within our service infills area. Staff is currently working on a plan of service with other city departments, and we'll have that together at the public hearing. Planning Commission will need to discuss this annexation petition and plan of services and schedule a public hearing. So this is due to the recent changes in state law. There's an additional notice time with the public hearing here. So staff is recommending October 30th. This is the one that you're going to see in October that you made the calendar amendment on earlier.
Okay. Any questions?
I might miss October 30th, too. I might go with you, wherever you're going.
Going to the beach, only thought I was going in a couple of weeks, but now, gosh, I'm going, I'm going for another month.
Awesome.
Don't blame you.
Move to set the public hearing for the 30th of October.
Second.
All right, Ms. Jekka.
Ms. Abelwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. And then, looks like a companion zoning application for approximately 15.9 acres located along Joby Jackson Parkway and Butler Drive to be zoned HI, 6.7 acres, GI, 2.9 acres, and CH, 6.3 acres, simultaneous with annexation. The City of Murfreesboro McDonald Associates and Quick Trip Corporation are the applicants. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Chair Jones. The City of Murfreesboro has also submitted this rezone and simultaneous with annexation, and we expect to see concurrence from the other two individual property owners involved as well. As I stated earlier, this property is currently vacant. We do have expected uses for a portion of the product, for a portion of these properties. Again, the IH is expected to be used as a portion of the city's transfer station. The CH zone portion is expected to be a proposed gas station with our proposed convenience store with gas pumps, and then the GH doesn't currently have a proposed user for the site. So adjacent properties are in zoning. The property is currently within the city, or within the county, and it's zoned light industrial in Rolleford County. The surrounding area is a mixture of commercial and industrial lands. The property to the north is the future site for the city transfer station. The property to the east across the interstate is a retail center and a subway, which is Zone CH. Property to the south is the future site of Buc-Ee's and Zone GI, general industrial. Also, to the south is some general industrial, general industrial zone vacant land. And to the west is vacant general industrial and some RS-15 zone land. The future land use for this area is called out as business innovation. The business innovation land use aims to promote economic growth, vibrant streets, diverse transportation options, organize large-scale projects and create a pillin' environment for business investment. It's intended to have investment, our development types of industrial manufacturing park, research and development centers, and incubators, as well as office space and some commercial uses. The CH, general industrial and heavy industrial zones, all are consistent with the business innovation district, land designation, and allow a variety of industrial and commercial So the commercial highway district that's requested for both zoning is approximately 6.3 acres. It would permit the proposed convenience store with gas pumps at that location. It also allows a wide variety of other office, retail, medical, and institutional uses. I've included in the packet for you, highlighted in orange is that category for CH of what those specific allowed uses are. The general industrial use is approximately 2.9 acres, and abuts larger GI zone properties that could potentially be combined with it if need be, but it also allows a variety of light, medium-intensity industrial uses, as well as many of the same uses that are in the CH zoning district. And that is highlighted on the use table you have in a light green. The heavy industrial site, that is approximately 6.7 acres, is the site that would be the city's transfer station, and it would allow that by right. This, too, allows, you know, along with heavy industrial uses, a variety of commercial and lighter industrial uses as well, and that is highlighted in blue on the use table. Planning Commission will need to discuss this rezoning request and schedule a public hearing. This is the other item that, due to the recent change in state law, is going to be at that October 30th meeting, is what staff's recommending.
Okay. Any further questions regarding the zoning application?
There aren't on, I'll make a motion, we set a public hearing for October the 30th.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jekka.
Ms. Abelwater? Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Then we have an annexation petition, a request for outside-the-city sewer service for approximately 37.56 acres located along Epps Mill Road. Rhodes Development Company is the applicant. Mr. Aguilera?
Thank you, Chair Jones. This item that we have on our agenda is an annexation petition of a request for outside city sewer service. The subject property is located at the north side of Epps Mill Road, as you can see here on the exhibit that's provided here, about approximately 37.56 acres located at 5595 Epps Mill Road, west of I-24. The applicant, Rhodes Development Company, has filed a petition for annexation or for approval as an outside-of-the-city sewer customer. Towery Development wishes to pursue the development of this property of the adjacent parcel to the east, Lot 2 of the Capital Business Park subdivision. Towery's and Rhodes both desire, has a desire for the subject parcel to be approved as an outside-city sewer customer rather than it being annexed. Lot 2 of the Capital Business Park subdivision to the east is this area here, as you can see on the map, is already being developed and already has been allocated the sewer capacity, granted at 9,100 gallons per day, but not to permit the extension of city sewer to the subject property. And so they would be, they would be asking to share this sewer capacity for this proposed warehouse use. Essentially, again, this would be, this proposal is for the granting of the extension of the sewer to that additional parcel, but maintaining the maximum amount that has been allotted to these developments, that 9,100 gallons per day. So again, it would be sharing these, that allotment that has been granted for them currently. Because the existing property on the 5595 Epps Mill Road is outside the city limits and is outside, is located outside the urban growth boundary, staff is recommending the property to be served as an outside-the-city sewer customer. As mentioned previously, the adjacent parcel to the east is already approved to be served as an outside-the-city sewer customer, and this additional parcel would not be increasing the previously approved sewer capacity with this new proposed warehouse use. If the planning commission and city council approve this as an outside-the-city sewer customer, it must be signed a city-equivalent zoning designation. The Capital Business Park subdivision to the east, the one that has already been designated and has been allotted that sewer capacity, has already been given a designation of LI, light industrial. And so city staff would recommend that this subject property be also assigned that same classification. If approved, the developer will be required to sign an agreement with the city binding the property to be developed in accordance with the specific zoning development standards, including the city's zoning ordinance. Also, any future development plans will be subject to the city's plan review process. Again, however, if the planning commission decides, it may direct staff to study the subject property for annexation. If so, directed staff will prepare a plan of services of the subject property and provide that report to the planning commission for a public hearing. The action that is needed today, the planning commission needs to discuss this matter further and either schedule a public hearing to consider the annexation of this property or recommend approval of this property to the city council as the outside-the-city sewer customer. As mentioned again previously, staff recommends approval as an outside-the-city sewer customer rather than an annexation due to the property's proximity to the current city limits and urban growth boundary. In addition, staff recommends that any approval of this be conditioned upon the following: that the total allocation of the sanitary sewer to the subject property combined with the adjacent property, again, that's Lot 2 of the Capital Business Park subdivision to the east, shall not exceed the amount of sanitary sewer capacity already allocated to said property to the east. And two, that the city-equivalent zoning classification of LI be assigned to the subject property. I'm here if you have any questions.
I've just got a couple of questions, and I understand totally that we're saying it doesn't, that they're sharing the allotment, but if I remember specifically with a council issue, we have a finite amount of sewer in this area. So do both, does the property owners understand that there is no more going back to well, and it there's, it is what it is?
Yes, sir, Mr. Wright. They do, and I think in their, in their letter requesting this, I think they specifically reference that they will not use any more than they've, than the property owner to the east has already been granted, which is, they're wanting to combine both of those properties.
But is the property owner, and so is the same property owner, or there's?
I think.
I just want to make sure that the property owners involved understand that it is shared, and neither one of them can go back to the well for any more in the future.
Yeah, I believe they do understand that, but I would invite them to come up to the, is it Mr. Towery back there? I'd invite Mr. Towery to come up to the podium and acknowledge that on the record.
Yeah, here's the letter as well that Mr. Blom was referring to.
Okay.
Hi, Clayton Towery. Yes, we do understand that.
Okay. I just want to make sure it was on the record, everybody understood, because we have a finite amount out there.
And for clarification, what it does is give us flexibility on, you know, effectively where we could put a building.
Okay.
So it just, it opens up the whole back of that site. You know, maybe it's a building that extends across the property line, or it's a series of buildings in that, you know, but given light industrial uses, 9,100 gallons per day across that entire site is, we can work with that.
Okay, fantastic. You want it on the 30th or the 2nd?
No, this is actually.
Oh.
If you choose not to, not to study it for annexation, which we would, which we would recommend you not doing, and just approve it as an outside-the-city sewer customer, then it will, the recommendation will be forwarded to council automatically as an outside-the-city sewer customer.
All right, I move for approval.
Can I ask a question before you? So used to, and I understand that we're not looking for them to be annexed at this point in time, but if my memory serves me correctly, any time that we had allowed somebody to be an outside and have access to sewer outside the city, they would be in a position that they couldn't oppose being annexed in the city at a later date if the city so chose. Is that a caveat to this application or not?
So, so I believe that that may still be in the city code. However, this is outside the city's urban growth boundary, and it is so far removed from the existing city limits. I would say that the likelihood that we would ever annex that far outside of the city limits, if it ever happens, would be decades and decades in the future.
I'd say there's plenty of people on 96 and a lot of highways that would have said the same thing.
Our county tries to get done what they're trying to do, then it.
That's right. Anyway, for whatever it's worth.
Is that something you can decide and figure out before?
Well, I just want to know, you know, applicant may need to know that.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's still there.
Yeah.
Yeah. For whatever that's worth.
We'll certainly look into that.
Okay.
Okay.
Move to approve this as an outside-city sewer user.
Second.
And is that subject to the two conditions that we placed on?
Absolutely it is.
And my second is also.
Okay, Ms. Jekka.
Ms. Abelwater? Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay.
And thank you for sitting through the whole meeting. He earned it.
That does conclude our new business, and moving on to staff reports and other business, we have one item there. Man. Mandatory referral to consider the dedication of an electric easement on city-owned property located along Warrior Drive. Middle Tennessee Electric is the applicant. Ms. Lewis, welcome.
Thank you. This afternoon, for your consideration, we have a request for a mandatory referral to allow for the dedication of an electric easement for Middle Tennessee Electric on property that the city owns on Warrior Drive, just, which is off of New Salem Highway. Due to the proposed West Rutherford Boulevard extension to Warrior Drive, Middle Tennessee Electric is proposing to reroute some of its existing electric infrastructure. The requested easement will be for a guywire stub on the city's parcel for the relocation of roadway and signalization features. An exhibit depicting the location of the proposed power line and easement is included in the agenda materials. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of this request to the city council, subject to the following three conditions. Condition one, if approved by city council, Middle Tennessee Electric will be responsible for providing the information necessary, including but not limited to, any exhibits and legal descriptions. For the legal department to prepare legal instruments to formally dedicate the proposed easement in question. The legal instruments will be subject to final review and approval of the legal department. Condition two, Middle Tennessee Electric will also be responsible for recording these instruments, including payment of the recording fee. And condition three, provide a full set of construction drawings to the Murfreesboro Water Resources Department to review. The location of their proposed power line will be subject to the Water Resources Department review and approval so as to avoid conflicts with existing water, repurified water, and sanitary sewer infrastructure.
Okay. Any questions?
Make the motion, will you approve, subject to all staff comments?
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jekka.
Ms. Saberwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. That concludes everything we have on our agenda for today. Do we have any other staff reports or other business we need to tend to?
I do not.
Okay. If not, we stand adjourned.